Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Decker.
Here.
Counselor Hassan.
Present.
Counselor Tivnan.
Here.
Counselor Hartmeier Frig.
Here.
Counselor Teeter.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Present. Before we start this evening, we do have a little bit of a change. We have our police chief joining us as the acting city manager, and she is trying to get her vote apparently for the full-time job, and you have it, no problem. So Jenny's never brought me a cookie one time. So just someone text her and say, "Good luck." Okay, so tonight's agenda is rather full. We're gonna start with visitor comments. We have a few proclamations. We have a rather robust consent agenda. Consent is routine things of business that we vote on, that we've already heard a lot about. We have a couple of presentations with us this evening, and then some public hearings. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and get to order. Tonight's public comment will be first. We have quite a stack. You'll have two minutes to address the council when your name is called. As a reminder, public comment is an important part of local government business. However, to keep us compliant with open meeting laws, this is a time for us to listen, not a time for us for dialogue. If follow-up is required, the acting city manager police chief will follow up via email. So with that, we have Lucy Frig up first, and then Mary Johnson, you're on deck.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Lucifrig, and I have been in Beaverton and the metro area resident for over two decades, and I'm also a parent of a St. Cecilia schools elementary student. It is apparent how the neighborhoods in the metro area changed over the last years with increased crime, drug issues, and homelessness, and how it is changing over the last year in central Beaverton. The homeless shelter creates lots of traffic, including inside and outside of the public library, the St. Cecilia parking lot and adjusted streets, and the park with fountains and a play structure. All are within the same intersection of Southwest Hall Boulevard and Fifth Street. We are not insensitive to the fact that there is a large problem stemming from core issues such as decriminalization of drugs, mental health issues, rent increase, and others that are leading to homelessness, drug addictions, and overdosing. Instead of providing resources to address the core issues, the city created a homeless shelter in one of the most frequented places in the intersection of cultural, educational, worshiping, and recreational in the heart of Beaverton. The St. Cecilia students, staff, and the families are regularly witnessing incidents in front and around the homeless shelter and endure interruptions during the school hours. Just last week, during the release of students, the Southwest Hall Boulevard was blocked by two police cars due to an incident with one of the homeless shelter visitors who was in the middle of the road. We have seen people camping in their cars in the school and parish parking lot and the streets. There was a hit-and-run when one of the parents' car was rammed into, and my family avoided a similar accident a few months past as well. It is unsafe and unsanitary for children as it's for the adults. We can't have individuals who are addicted to illegal substances roaming around. Nobody wants the children walking to school, to the library, or park could be harmed by having to walk along roads that could contain potentially dangerous hazards as a result of trash, biohazards, hypodermic needles, et cetera. All school zones should be drug-free, including around the St. Cecilia school. We need the city of Beaverton to build safer and healthier community for every student, staff, and their families, and move the shelter immediately from the proximity of the St. Cecilia school. Thank you for this opportunity to share my concern and asking the mayor and the city to promote student health and safety. Thank you.
Mary Johnson, and up on deck is Sarah Towner Tower.
Hi, my name is Mary Johnson. I am the parent to a second grader at St. Cecilia's school off Fifth Street. And I just wanted to voice kind of some concerns and experiences we've had since that shelter has been put into place there. On numerous occasions, we have parked, and we park typically at the corner of Tucker and Fifth. And on an occasion recently, a half-naked woman stumbled into the road clearly under the influence of something from the library to the shelter where my daughter saw, became very uncomfortable, and we had to re-buckle up and move to a different place to park because we were not comfortable with whatever was happening there. Recently, actually, two days ago, I saw a homeless man rinsing what looked like his five-gallon toilet bucket in the fountain that we have played in and kids play in often. I watched him rinsing that out inside that fountain. On more than one occasion over the last three years at St. Cecilia's, people have been doing drugs in the bushes by the dumpster right at the corner and blowing the smoke of marijuana and whatever else they are taking in right into the pathway of where our kids are walking into school. My daughter got a face full of marijuana smoke last year. It was upsetting. On a few other occasions, I've dealt with a man on the side of the road yelling at me and making finger guns at us, a man kicking and punching the air at cars passing by as well as mine as we're getting ready to walk into school. I've been approached at pickup and drop-off multiple times by people tapping on my window, soliciting, asking for cigarettes, trying to sell me things. On more than one occasion, the sidewalks have been blocked, so we weren't able to walk into school. Most recently, a man in a wheelchair was blocking it with a gentleman laying on the ground and two men standing behind him smoking joints and cigarettes. We had to step into the street to go around. In the parking lot there in the back at drop-off and pickup, we witnessed people openly drinking alcohol and smoking joints. My child and among other children, they don't feel comfortable going to the library anymore, which was something we've always enjoyed doing, but don't feel like we have the ability to do that there because the things that are happening in the bathrooms and in the benches right out front. I know we recently lost somebody there who had OD'd on fentanyl, who one of my community members had called in three weeks prior needing help because she was unresponsive. So I just want to know what the city's gonna do about it. And I hope that one of our children doesn't have to die or be assaulted before we do something about this. I don't know if it's because we're a private Catholic school and not a public school, but I feel very not taken seriously because of that. And I hope it has nothing to do with religious affiliation, and I just hope that the city does something before something gets hurt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sarah Towner, and up next is Monique.
Hi, thank you very much. Is this Mike?
I think either. Yep, that one.
All right, lovely. All right. Thank you for hearing us today. You wouldn't put a strip club next to an elementary school because there are certain behaviors that happen at a strip club that you can just predict might impact the elementary school students in a negative way, even though most of the people that go to a strip club go hang out, do their business, and go home. You wouldn't put a bar next to an elementary school because there are certain behaviors and customs and risks associated with putting a bar next to an elementary school. You wouldn't put a dispensary next to an elementary school because there are risks associated that you can predict. I am dumbfounded as to why we have allowed a shelter next to an elementary school. It is not the fact that these people are homeless that gives us concern, that gives us pause. It is that there are predictable behaviors associated with homeless communities, specifically those that are homeless for long periods of time, that we understand are because of drug use or mental health illness or mental health, I'm sorry, problems and illnesses. We can prevent these things just by allowing some distance. I don't think it's far-fetched to say this is a bad choice. I don't think that this is something that we can look at and say this was a good decision based on public planning, city planning, and long-term goals. I wonder what our legal counsel has to say about the risk associated with putting a shelter adjacent to an elementary school. As the cheapest person you will ever meet in your entire life, I can pinch a penny until Abe Lincoln screams for mercy. I do not want to pay extra taxes when someone is hurt by the predictable and preventable issue of placing a homeless shelter adjacent to an elementary school. What do you think our liability as a city would be if someone is harmed by the very predictable reality of placing people with mental illness and serious drug issues adjacent to an elementary school? Do you think a kindergartner that gets assaulted would be someone that the jury would look favorably on? Do you think the city could say, "We had no way of knowing that this would happen"? This is ridiculous. We have been promised that this is a short-term solution, but it doesn't seem like it's going to end anytime soon. The police have been extremely responsive. I very much appreciate their time and their efforts, but it seems like they have been hamstrung by the city and the city's desire to put something that can ostensibly be considered dangerous on the best of days adjacent to an elementary school. I would ask you to get back to me and those that are with us today to say, "When this is going to be closed? If this permanent shelter is really happening or if it's just a pipe dream?" I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Monique, and up after that is Amanda.
Hi, my name is Monique. I grew up in Beaverton. I was born in Portland. My dad served for Beaverton Police when the facility that the library or the space the library sits on was actually the police station. I've been here a long time. During that time, I've seen a lot of change. I'm not pleased with what's happening across the street from the library. I went to St. Cecilia's school. My son goes there now. We frequent there for masses. If we just pull that out of the equation, let's say it's a private school and you have no interest in what's going on in that school, let's just pull that out of the equation, just for the sake of like saying, "Hey, it's not your problem." There's a city library across the street from a facility that is a no-check facility. At one time, it was a warming shelter. At another time, it was a COVID space. And then it was quietly transitioned into something else that is not safe for the community around it. Everything that has been talked about here is absolutely true. I've seen it with my own eyes. My son sits in a classroom across the street from it. He watches people hide things in the bushes and come back for them later. He's watched drug deals happen. He's watched people get picked up by emergency vehicles when they're lying prone on the street. We call the police every time it happens, and we appreciate their response, but there's an issue with this location. There is a park nearby. There is a city library nearby that I think you would be invested in people using. It was a community center when it was first built, and it was across from a library that was a hub for a lot of traffic for children and families. You have completely changed the dynamic of that intersection by putting that facility there and changing it to a no-check shelter. There is a lot of behavior that's coming with that that is not safe. We don't go to the library as often anymore because of it. There are families around us that don't frequent the library. We also don't go to Saturday Market as often because we've been approached by people selling drugs. And all I'm asking you to do is find another location or finish what you've started. And putting it across the street from an elementary school is a problem, but I think you have a bigger problem on your hands because you're changing the dynamic of downtown Beaverton in a way that is detrimental to how often your spaces, including the city library, will be used and leveraged by the community that supports them. So I just appreciate that you take this seriously and that you do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, up on deck is Lisa Scott.
Hi, my name's Amanda Glocko, and I am a mother of two children and I'm also a registered nurse. And I wanted to just take some time to let you know my feelings about this. Basically, I am demanding real change. We have had enough. We as parents are terrified something horrible will happen to our children. Would you feel comfortable if your kids were going to elementary school next to a homeless shelter, knowing they witness homeless taking illegal drugs, knowing they witness mentally ill people screaming profanities, knowing these people are not screened and could have access to your child at most times during the day? These homeless people are unpredictable. They're almost always on drugs and, you know, or coming off of drugs, and we don't really know what they're gonna be doing. We've had homeless people, you know, come onto our campus and follow our children and our teachers. And, you know, multiple times, even during the day, they have to call 911 and get the police there to, you know, investigate what's going on. You know, I feel that all of you will be held accountable when one of our innocent children is exposed to something illicit if they encounter violence or if they're harmed by needles or drugs. I feel like we can absolutely have compassion for the homeless, and at the same time... I'll start again. We can absolutely have compassion for the homeless and at the same time protect our children. Those two things can absolutely exist together. That is your job at the city council. We trust you to help us with this. This should never be our children's problem.
Margaret Walker and Megan.
Hello, my name is Lisa Scott. I have two kids at St. Cecilia's, and we've been with the school for over 10 years. And I'm here representing myself, my family, the kids at the school, and our community at large. And I think it's absolutely irresponsible and just unfathomable that this is happening. There's a homeless shelter right next to the school, church, library, fountain, playground, residential areas, and the list goes on and on. And what I'd like to know is, "Why is there a homeless shelter less than 20 feet from my children's school, the library, park, and fountains? Why on hot days do the teachers have to close their windows so as to avoid the constant shouting and profanities coming from the shelter? Why is there suddenly an influx of homeless g- excuse me, gathered at the shelter during the day? Why are they allowed to sleep in the grass, bathrooms, benches, and entryways to the shelter and library during the day? Why are they allowed to use the fountains to bathe nude with our children around? Why do they have more rights than us tax-paying, law-abiding citizens raising our most valuable and precious assets to a brighter future, our children? Why are these same children now seeing dead people on park benches? Your plans for a new shelter opening in summer 2024 are too long a time to wait. The weather has not even turned cold, and yet here we are, a month in from school, and the police have responded how many times? It's completely unacceptable, and change needs to happen now. I don't know if you have the power to open, using emergency management resources, declare a state of emergency, and open a temporary shelter in the meantime, but this has to stop. It's so dangerous, and our children deserve better. Our kids face enough challenges safety-wise, being a child in a school in America anyways. It doesn't matter whether it's a private school or a public school. It's not fair to them. They have enough to worry about simply making it through the day at school. The last thing they should be worrying about is a homeless shelter less than 20 feet from where they are trying to get an education to better themselves for a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Walker, Megan, and then we'll move to people wanting to testify online.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address my concerns related to the Beaverton Center on Fifth, next door to St. Cecilia's, a school that serves children from age three to age 14. My name is Margaret Walker. I have been a resident of the city of Beaverton over 50 years. In addition to teaching St. Cecilia first graders for 28 years, my children graduated from that school, and my grandsons continue the legacy and attend there now. While I understand the need to serve the residents of the city, I feel you cannot serve one group of people at the expense of another, and that's what's being done. You have chosen to place this facility, and the address is 12350 Southwest Fifth, next to a school at 12250 Southwest Fifth. That school has been in its current location for 70 years. They did not move next to the homeless shelter. The homeless shelter was located next to them. Fighting, yelling, open drug use, and people in various stages of undress are observed daily by our students. Last week, a young man overdosed in front of the library, a place many of our students go immediately after school. They should not have to witness this. This is not the education that our students need, want, or deserve. I also have serious concerns about the light, about the lack of oversight of those in charge of managing this facility. Eighteen months ago, a building was purchased by the city of Beaverton on Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. And I know you looked very carefully at the whole thing. You were looking at where the best location would be, and you found something. You used taxpayer and federal monies. It is time to move the shelter now, even if you have to retrofit. In closing, I simply pose this question to each of you. Would you want your children, your grandchildren, your nieces and nephews to have this facility next to the school where they attend? My guess is your answer is no. So keeping your response to my question in mind, take immediate action on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Megan.
Hello, my name is Megan Menton. I'm sure all of you have gotten emails from me over the past three years. I'm a resident of Beaverton and have three children ages five, seven, and 10, who all attend St. Cecilia's school and have since they were three. I'm also a longtime parishioner, and I am an employee of the school for the past three years. Our students that we serve are three years old through eighth grade. Our parish has services from the morning through the evening every day of the week. We have been in this location and been a school for over 100 years, and we have parishioners and students who experience things that nobody should. While I know homelessness is a challenging and complex issue, safety also is. I believe our officers are doing everything that they can to help us. The integrity of our city is in question, and it's disappointing when we've worked so hard through grants to give Beaverton a facelift downtown. The restaurants, businesses, and farmers markets in the library have all had drastic decline in business just from who they see and what they see. We fear leaving school en masse in the dark because of things that happen, and we don't know what we're going to encounter. We've always been and continue to be supportive of helping those in need, especially through our pantry, St. Vincent de Paul. And we often have fundraisers and drives. We're doing a sock drive this month to help those and collect donations to those that need it. For the past three years, I've been advocating and reaching out to you guys in regards to the shelter next door and the people who frequent it. As you know, that this is a shelter that was opened pretty quietly without having any barriers, meaning that there's sex offenders and pedophiles next door to our children. This would never be allowed next to a public school. And this housing-first policy with entry without barrier and no incentive for recovery has been shown to be totally ineffective in a way to solve homelessness. This year, we've noticed an uptake in crime from the people staying in or around the shelter. They frequent the benches in front of the Beaverton City Library as well as our school property. We have a fence, but we're also not a prison, so we shouldn't have to be keeping people out from our campus. We have six classrooms that have windows on the side of the shelter that's less than 500 feet away, and children witness police-worthy disturbances daily. We've had to call 911 weekly to report disturbances outside of our classroom windows from people yelling profanities, doing drugs, domestic disputes, the list goes on. When people come on our campus during the day, it's alarming and concerning to parishioner students, staff, as well as parents. Last week, we had a gentleman in the middle of Hall Boulevard for over two and a half hours who, during our school dismissal time, refused to move. There were police, ambulance, fire, medical, as well as Washington County sheriffs there, and that's taxpayer money, too. The Resource Center has the, there's the Resource Center in the library for the homeless individuals that it provides exclusions to the updated ordinance that passed last June outlining where people are able to be experiencing homelessness, and that's also a concern of ours. I understand Measure 110 is a concern of the city council and the mayor. However, this is not where our priorities are in regards to the shelter. My questions are, "When did our children become less of a priority? When did taxpayers and good-standing citizens become less of a priority? Would you be okay sending your own children to school witnessing dead bodies and seeing people who are having mental illness and drug-induced situations daily? Would you feel safe sending them to the public library after school like many of our families do and potentially coming in contact with something such as fentanyl? Enough is enough, and I'm asking for immediate relocation of the shelter while waiting for the new shelter to open. I want immediate relocation of the Resource Center and the library. It seems that might be better fit here in City Hall. And I think the time is now. We're tired of having the can kicked down the road and being put off, and I thank you for your urgency in this matter."
Thank you. All right, up first is Gabe Studman, and then Leonard Frank. As a reminder, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Every single aspect of the COVID agenda is Jewish. Rochelle Walensky, CDC Director, Jewish. CDC Deputy Director, Anne Shuchat, Jewish. CDC Chief of Staff, Sherry Berger, Jewish.
Okay, that's enough. I'm gonna exercise some control. We don't need comments like that. Thank you. The next person welcome to speak is Leonard Frank. Leonard Frank, you've been given speaking privileges. Andy O'Brien.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak tonight. It was really heartbreaking hearing from those women talking about, you know, the homeless crisis and how the children are being exposed to that, and I kind of wonder, is the city not doing anything because they're Catholics? And it's like some type of weird discrimination thing? Because I feel like if it was any other group, if it was a public school, the city would be there to stop it. If it was a synagogue or a Jewish school, the city council would be there to help them, but because it's Catholics, no one seems to care. And I'm wondering, I'm trying to tie this in with the, with the crime and the privilege and all this stuff. Is this privilege to have our culture and racial identity replaced and replaced, to have our borders overrun on our dime, to have our children groomed by homosexual Jews, to have our women raped and...
Okay, please cut them off, too. If you are, I will cut every single person off that starts a comment like that. This is not welcome in our city. It's not welcome in our chambers. If you're here to address something on the agenda or something about the city, I welcome you to speak. Anyone else will be cut off immediately. Christopher Berry.
Yes, hello. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I just wonder, why are we tolerating these fucking kite-sucking baby dicks?
Okay, cut them off, too. Thank you. Darnell Johnson. I know, but they... I know, but they could be.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I have a prepared statement that I'd like to read. I hope you'll let me read it. Thank you. Name of the statement is, what is white privilege to me?
Okay, cut them off too. Thank you. Paul Miller?
Thank you for your time. I'd like to speak on the issue of violent crime, larceny, and break-ins to vehicles. Our city has been facing increasing levels of vandalism and break-ins to cars and homes, and this seems to keep continuing in an upward spike. Last month, my car's passenger window was broken into. The main solution in fixing this problem is to put the people committing these crimes in prison and to call out the prosecutors that are giving young black men short sentences for atrocious crimes. Seven percent of the population commits over 60% of all violent crimes. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Okay, they'll be cut off too. Thank you. Jimbo Rivers?
Yeah, so it's pretty tragic that, you know, that we got this homeless shelter near the school. You know, the kids don't need to be subjected to seeing needles and dead bodies like multiple other women earlier tonight pointed out. You know, I mean, that's a real shame that they got their little kids walking to school and they gotta, you know, see some dead stiff body on the bench. And to address the women in the room directly that were the ones up here speaking, you know, it's really the fault of the council for really not doing anything about this. You know, and it's a shame because you guys think you're doing the right thing coming to these meetings, which honestly is just a waste of time, but, you know, I feel for you. You're doing the right thing trying to convince this council, you know, to actually do something about it, but the fact is, from now until the end of time, this council's gonna flood this town with a thousand niggers a week.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My timer says one minute. Can I get that reset, please?
It says two minutes. You're welcome to go.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to start with a moment of silence for Ethan Liming, L-I-M-I-N-G. I will follow that up with a brief statement. Now, what I maintain, ladies and gentlemen, the whole thrust of my speech tonight will be that you cannot have an educated opinion, cannot manage the affairs of the so-called democracy unless you are given all the facts. If you are denied, could not possibly guide the ship of state any more than a navigator could guide a ship if you deprived him the information of his latitude and longitude, the speed of the ship, and so forth. You have got to let people know the facts of the matter before they can judge correctly. And I maintain that most people who are liberals, and I have found that they are sincere, dedicated, and sincere people, are liberals, and most of them in the academic community are liberals. The reason is that the facts that they are given leaves them no choice. Now, the reason for it, ladies and gentlemen, I maintain, as I've said, that you are deprived facts. Your minds work in many ways like a computer. You are not exactly a computer, but your minds work like a computer in this respect. If you feed into a computer false information, you know that you're not going to get good solutions out. If you feed lies into a computer, you're going to get lies and false information out. If you neglect the information into a computer, you can't get valid answers. Your minds work the same way. If they have some way of keeping from you knowledge that you must know, you cannot make valid discussions. Now, that being said, I recently reviewed some FBI statistics. It says that one in 22 men of a certain group will commit murder one time in their life, and that the same group of women murder at a higher rate than white men. And that is the savage niggers and somebody who's due to do that.
Okay, cut them off, please. Thank you. I think the council president's addressing the attorney. I feel like these are popping up and they're AI-generated, and so I want to make sure what our legal... We're gonna take a brief two minutes and we're gonna open up public comment at the end of the agenda, so... After conferring with our legal counsel, I'm gonna open public comment again at the end of the meeting to hear everyone else, so you're welcome to stick around till nine or 10 or 11, whenever we decide we're ending. On tonight's agenda, we are now on to proclamations. We have three proclamations before the council this evening. Indigenous Peoples' Day, Filipino-American History Month, and International Walk and Roll to School Day. We'll go ahead and start with Indigenous Peoples' Day, read by the council president.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Beaverton. Whereas the City of Beaverton recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the Americas have been stewards of this land since time immemorial. And whereas the city recognizes that the Tualton Valley was the land of the Atulati Band of the Kalituya Indians, after whom the valley is named. And whereas the city recognizes that the area currently known as Beaverton was a Native American village called Chikapi or Place of the Beaver. And whereas the city recognizes the value of the many contributions past and present that indigenous peoples have made to this community. And whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December 16, 2010, recognizing the right to dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information. And whereas in 2016, Beaverton officially declared the second Monday of October Indigenous Peoples' Day in Resolution Number 4408 and reaffirmed its commitment to respect the human rights of Beaverton's American Indian, Alaska Native, and Indigenous communities. And whereas the City of Beaverton has responsibility to oppose systemic racism towards indigenous peoples of the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty, income inequality, disproportionate educational and social outcomes, and lack of access to essential health services, leaving the community at heightened risk, especially during a pandemic. And whereas the City of Beaverton participates in a regional tribal affairs collaborative to seek to build a foundation for greater understanding, honoring, and engaging with area tribal nations in the future. Now therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim October 9, 2023 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Beaverton.
Thank you, Council President. Counselor Kimmy?
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor and City of Beaverton. Whereas October 2023 is the 436th anniversary of the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence on the shores of the west coast of the continental United States, and whereas Oregonians should be informed of the positive impact Filipino-Americans have had on our communities. And whereas in Oregon, thousands of Filipino-Americans have made contributions to the fields of teaching, business, government services, agriculture, ministry, healthcare, and other sciences, humanities, and United States Armed Forces. And whereas it is imperative for Filipino-American youth to have positive role models who instill in them the importance of education, complemented by the richness of their ethnicity and values of their legacy. And whereas efforts must continue to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture because the role of Filipino-Americans and those of other people have been overlooked in the writing, teaching, and learning of the United States history, and whereas this anniversary is a significant time to study the advancement of Filipino-Americans, a time of celebration, remembrance, reflection, and motivation, and a relevant time for all of our people to learn and appreciate more about Filipino-Americans and their history contributions to our nation and to Oregon. Now therefore, I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim October 23 as Filipino-American History Month in the City of Beaverton and encourage all people to join in recognition of the positive impact Filipino-Americans have had and continue to have on our community.
Thank you, and you can blame my staff for being very wordy. We'll read the next proclamation before our first presentation, since we have some VIPs here to talk about Safe Routes to School. So we'll present them the proclamation ahead of their presentation. With that, Chief, do we have any staff items this evening?
No, ma'am.
I think the city manager owes you some cookies after tonight, so I'll remind her via text.
I couldn't agree more.
Council President, consent agenda, please.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Hassan. Any discussion on the motion this evening? I'll just say that the majority of our consent agenda tonight is about our shelter that is opening. It is not a pipe dream. We are in November starting our construction project. I wouldn't say ribbon-cutting. That seems unfair. We're gonna go beat a wall down together as we start the internal construction of that building. The city council worked hard and diligently on securing the funding, so taxpayers didn't have to pay for it. We did a combined funds of federal funds, ARPA funds, working with SHS funds, and we delivered, we're going to deliver a very prominent shelter here in the city. We took under great advisement where it's currently located. Our police department has been working diligently with the school. And so we have, tonight are establishing a lot of contracts around funding it, around who's gonna operate it, and the city's been working diligently towards this day. If we can open it sooner, we're gonna push as fast as we can, but for government to move from no homeless plan to opening a fully funded, paid-for shelter in three years is pretty remarkable. I'm proud of our staff, and you know, we have Megan Cohen in the audience that has shepherded the majority of this and shouldered a lot of this project along the way and the unkind comments and working with our community to deliver something, so thank you, Megan, for the hard work on this project and the staff in the room that made this a reality. I am so proud of our staff for doing the hard work tonight, contracting with our government. And as a reminder, it takes every level of government working together to accomplish big things. When this shelter opens, it's the city, the county, metro, state, and federal government all had to do their share to make sure that the shelter is operating. So as we work towards good neighbor agreements, as we work towards opening, you know, I want us to remain dignity to the people that are going to serve it, and I look forward to seeing everyone on November 3 when we start our construction of that building. With that, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. I'm gonna welcome up our first presentation this evening while I read our proclamation, and not to be biased, but my daughter goes to school with a Safe Routes to School person, and we ride and walk every day together, so she'll accept the proclamation this evening. Whereas Beaverton students and families are joining thousands of people from around the world on International Walk and Roll to School Day. And whereas Beaverton's Safe Route to School promotes, creates safe, convenient, and fun opportunities for youth to walk, skateboard, bike, scooter, and ride the bus to and from school. And whereas making walking and biking to school a safer and more appealing transportation choice, encouraging a healthy, active lifestyle from an early age. And whereas Walk and Roll to School Day guarantees enthusiasm for the program and allows parents to experience that when more people walk and roll to school, the routes are safer and easier for everyone to use. Whereas fewer cars on the road to school means less traffic congestion and pollution. And whereas the City of Beaverton is proud to partner with Beaverton School District's Safe Route to School Program for a healthy and safety of our children and to foster the creative, creation of a livable, vibrant community, I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim October 4, 2023 as International Walk and Roll to School Day in the City of Beaverton and urge all residents to join students, parents, teachers, community leaders around the world who are coming together to walk and roll in the school and the neighborhood. My only request is, can it not rain? Because yesterday's Walk and Roll to School was terrible. I think the council would like to take a photo with you, if that's cool, and give you this proclamation.
Yes, I have a bunch of walk and roll champions and activists, so come on up.
I know you want to be close. Allison, if you want to be close, it's okay. Just scoot on over. It's been an interesting long evening. Thank you for, thank you for joining us today. And if you forget, we put your name in front of your seat, so you remember where to go. Thank you. Jean, it looks like you got some friends with you today. If you could introduce them, and we are excited to hear about this.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jean Sana Shal Biggs from the Community Development Department. Joining us here this evening from the Beaverton School District is Leah Beato, and she leads the Safe Routes to School program there. And she's doing the presentation this evening, and you'll hear from her in a moment. And then also joining us here at the table is Jabra Khasho. You know Jabra, he is our city transportation engineer. The two of us work with Leah in our respective roles coordinating this work, and it's really a delight to have Leah here to share all the great things that they've been doing.
Great, thank you so much for having me. So Leah Beato-Lewis, Safe Routes to School Coordinator for the Beaverton School District. I also want to mention that I'm joined tonight by our three program assistants, so if you could wave, we have Linda Falden, Julia Saunders, and Kimberly Schultz. The Beaverton Safe Routes to School program is part of a national effort to encourage students and families to walk, bicycle, and bus to school while decreasing the number of single-car trips driven to and from schools. The national framework is centered on what we call the Six E's, which summarize the key components of our comprehensive integrated approach. They are education, which are pedestrian and bicycle safety lessons taught both during school and at after-school events. Engineering, these are action plans which advocate for targeted improvements to streets, signs, and signals on routes to schools. Engagement, building relationships and creating programs that are beneficial to our unique school communities. Encouragement, activities promoting walking, biking, and busing. Evaluation, program assessments, including student travel surveys. And equity, which is embedded within all of our programming to assist with the distribution of resources to reduce health and wealth disparities for all Beaverton students. Our program thrives through the valuable support from Metro, the Oregon Department of Transportation, and the City of Beaverton. Thank you. During the 2223 school year, our program experienced substantial growth facilitated by the addition of two new staff members. This expansion enabled us to extend our reach to more families and students and deliver targeted, hands-on support to our Title I or low-income schools. Additionally, in July 23, the Beaverton School District made an investment to the program by creating a Safe Routes to School Coordinator position within the Transportation Department, ensuring the continuity of the program for years to come. We're delighted to report a highly successful year. Our commitment to delivering robust and equity-focused programming resulted in teaching pedestrian and bike safety lessons to nearly 6,000 Beaverton students, distributing 500 free helmets, supporting 10 regular walking school buses, and organizing eight well-attended multi-school events. As a result, we're pleased to see the beginning of what we hope is a trend away from the surge in single-car trips that we saw after pandemic school closures. District-wide, drive rates are down by 2% and bus ridership is up by 2%. While we didn't see a significant change in our district walk rates from the previous year, we are still at an all-time high since our program began collecting information. we are still at an all-time high since our program began collecting information in 2013. Safe Routes to School provides students in the community with the skills to walk and bicycle safely, educating them about the benefits of walking and bicycling, and teaching them about the broad range of transportation choices. Our instructors deliver a comprehensive 45-minute lesson to kindergarten through 5th grade students as part of their regular PE classes. We teach a total of 11 to 12 schools each year with the goal of reaching every elementary student before they reach middle school. Last year, we launched new environmental lessons to elementary school green teams. We covered a wide range of topics, including the science of global warming and inquiry-based math exercises to calculate things like carbon emissions. As a result, three green teams utilized our student-led anti-idol toolkit to create a campaign for their communities. One student shared, "I didn't expect the grownups to listen to us, but they did." The last component of our education program are bicycle safety lessons taught via our bike rodeo program. Last year, we held four rodeos, including a summer event in partnership with Twelston Hills Parks and Recreation District. Our rodeos include bike handling skills, helmet fittings, free helmets for those who need them, and a free bike check. Safe Routes to School collaborates with other agencies to create physical improvements to streets and neighborhoods that make walking and bicycling safer, more comfortable and more convenient. The Safe Routes to School Coordination Team, of which both Jean and Jabra regularly attend, plays a pivotal role in addressing infrastructure concerns along student walk routes. We meet monthly to ensure that students' transportation needs remain at the forefront of decision-making processes. With the help of both Washington County and the City of Beaverton, we piloted a wayfinding sign project with three schools. The project aimed to directly address distance as a barrier indicated by parents for walking and biking to school. El Monica was one of the three schools chosen, and consequently, they saw an increase in their walk-bike rate by 11% and a decrease in their drive rate by 8%. Currently, we're assisting the city with project identification for the next round of Safe Routes to School infrastructure grant funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation. All Safe Routes to School initiatives begin by listening to students, families, teachers and school leaders. Last year, our program featured 10 regular walking school buses. These are groups of students walking to school with an adult leader from a central meeting location. These buses operate on a daily, weekly or monthly basis depending on the community's needs. Many of our walking school bus programs include student leaders that assist with mentoring younger students on their walk to school together. We launched 12 regular walking school bus programs just this fall. The popularity of these programs has grown in large part due to a Metro Micro Grant that's being used to provide small stipends to walk the leaders and to purchase extra prizes for participants. Last spring, VOS piloted this program to provide a daily transportation choice to select students with chronic absenteeism. The program was so successful that they're applying for a larger $5,000 grant for this current school year. Last year also saw the creation of our first two bike buses. Highten launched their first bike bus during May Bike Week and almost doubled the number of bikes in the RACs from the previous year. Safe Routes to School generates enthusiasm and increased opportunities to try walking and bicycling to school through events, activities and programs. In addition to our two district-wide events, International Walk and Roll Day and May Bike Week, we hold several optional events throughout the year, and they highlight different modes of transportation. These events used to see only about three or four schools opt in, and now we have 20 or more schools participate in each of these events. Our planned additional events this year include Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in November, our 5th Annual Walk and Roll Art Contest in January, Love the Bus Week in February, Winter Walk and Roll Day in March, and our second family geocaching treasure hunt set for next summer. As we prepare for tomorrow's International Walk and Roll Day, we wanted to share the success of this event through the years. We've seen a 23% increase in participants from 2019 to 2022. Last year, 19,307 students enjoyed a fun-filled day with 18 walking school buses. This event really sets a tone for active transportation throughout the school year. Successful schools saw an increase to their normal walk and bike rate of up to 23%, and our most successful schools saw 94% of their students participate. We're always assessing which approaches are more or less successful, ensuring that programs and initiatives are supporting equitable outcomes, and identifying unintended consequences and opportunities to improve. Our program values the input of parents and guardians through our annual parent survey. Parents' insights on students' travel patterns and perceptions of route safety hold great significance as we collaborate with the city and county to prioritize necessary road improvements. By combining the district survey with classroom tallies, we gain a comprehensive understanding of student commuting patterns across the district. Distance, speed of traffic along routes, weather and amount of traffic along routes remain as the top chartered barriers for families choosing active travel to school. We work to ensure that Safe Routes to School initiatives are benefiting all demographic groups with particular attention to ensuring safe, healthy and fair outcomes for low-income students, students of color, students of all genders, students with disabilities. Our commitment to promoting safety extends to providing free helmets to children in need. Last year, we integrated the Free Helmet Program into our safety lessons in the schools. We distributed and taught over 500 students how to properly fit their helmet. The overwhelming demand for helmets has prompted us to reassess and expand our approach to meet the needs of our community. Additionally, we prioritize our Title I schools by adopting an inclusive approach to our events. Recognizing that these schools often have limited volunteer resources, we provide direct support in organizing, publicizing and facilitating walking and rolling events to three to four of Beaverton's Title I elementary schools each year. A notable success story unfolded at Greenway Elementary School, where we witnessed over 100 participants join us last year for their inaugural walking school bus during the 2022 International Walk and Roll to School Day. Conestoga Middle School students assisted with the distribution of prizes and walked alongside the younger elementary students to school. Looking ahead to the school year, a key focus will be the implementation of our BIPOC outreach plan aimed at fostering stronger connections with Beaverton's communities of color and gaining valuable insights to better serve our students. Additionally, our steadfast objective remains to decrease single car trips while promoting an increase in regular walking school buses throughout BSD. We also eagerly anticipate piloting our newly developed special education and preschool lessons, ensuring their readiness for wider community instruction. And we feel hopeful that as we see a slow return to more active travel and bus ridership after the pandemic school closures, we can build on this momentum to create lasting change in the number of car trips taken to and from school each day. A surge in program participation rates and new opportunities for active travel in the form of walking school buses and bike buses have allowed more families to try walking and biking to school. We need to continue to work together to make walking, biking and busing the preferred choice to school. This includes our partnership with the City of Beaverton to advocate for improved conditions on suggested routes. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. I, as you know, am a huge advocate of the work that you do, particularly in our neighborhood school. I will say that my husband and I are active bike riders, and we could not compel our five-year-old to ride a bike to save her life until you guys were bike ferries that gave out things at the school. And every day she woke up wanting to ride her bike. And the peer pressure, because she had training wheels, I mean, we're two, you know, college athletes, couldn't convince her kid to do anything. And the peer pressure to get her training wheels off, she went to bike camp this summer, and it was all so she could ride her bike to school this year. And so, thank you so much for the work that you do on behalf of all the students in Beaverton, because it is incredibly important. And as we see parents walking, and it helps us to prioritize where we spend our very precious transportation funding. Council Tivnan?
Thank you for the good news tonight. Everyone in this room needed that. I'm a mother of a 14-year-old who just started high school, which is still blowing my mind. And he was lucky enough to have an elementary school, his middle school and his high school all within walking distance. When he was younger in elementary school, of course, it was too far, it was just under a mile. And I was a commuter and biking wasn't a great option for us. So we were both introduced to walking through our neighborhood when we moved into the neighborhood by this program and by the Walk and Roll Day. And as he got older and he was able to take on more responsibility, and I felt safer with him leaving the house, because there was a time when I couldn't even fathom him walking across the street by himself, he opted to walk. And he is now at a college that is exactly one mile from our house, and he walks, rain or shine. And there's hills both ways. So thank you for, as a parent, making me feel safe enough to let my son leave the house and walk to school every day. Now, I do have one question, and that is if you have, if there's ever been a consideration for looking into safely walking and biking to, I'm guessing, high schools to start with at night. And the reason why I ask is because our son's high school had their first football game of the year, and of course, we wanted to be there, and we decided we were going to walk. Well, walking a mile as a 44-year-old was a little different, I think. I don't know how he does it every day. But we did it, and there were some parts of it that were so dark, we couldn't see the sidewalk in front of us. And there were like tree roots that were bringing them up. And yeah, my husband almost took a spill into the street because of it. And we know now to where headlamps are to have flashlights with us, but it did catch us unaware. And I can, we did see some other people out that night. So I was just wondering if nighttime assessments have been done, especially for the high schools where there are night events like football and soccer and things like that? And if you could speak to that at all?
Yeah, sure. Well, one of the things we do at the early age is we do integrate into that 45-minute lesson with students about visibility. So we educate students about laws on bicycles and lights. We educate them about being visible, what does that mean, reflective bright clothing. But as far as working with the city, we do often talk about lighting. In the past, it's been mostly for our high school students because they start so early. They are often commuting in the dark to get to bus stops or to walk to school. So that is something that we have talked about. I know right now, Washington County is actually working with us to increase the wattage on lighting for the county. But definitely, lighting is a consideration and something that we educate the students about too, about being visible.
Interesting thing to ask next time you poll, is any folks that do walk or roll at night for those events? Just, I'm curious, we could be an anomaly, but, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Council Tivnan, you better call the city council about your concern about sidewalks and lighting. Councilor Hassan?
I have one question and two comments. Thank you so much for the presentation. I actually had the privilege, I think, to kind of first reach out to you because we had some issues in our school with nighttime. It's not nighttime, it's morning for us, because if some of, one of us gets up at 6:00 AM, not me, and goes to the bus and has to walk, and so it's pretty dark. So that was kind of my first introduction to you, which is the premise of my question, which is for families who may not know how to come to you or to find you when it comes to issues like this, what is your recommended, like, what should we tell people? Because I know that I had the privilege to say, okay, we can reach out to staff. But if a parent is like, hey, I have this challenge with bike roll-walk, or I'd like to do this, like, where should we kind of as elected send people? I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, definitely, I would love for you to send them to me. We do have our own website, it has a wealth of resources on there. But we're in the BSD overall website, and we're listed under the Transportation Department. And there is a contact form, and so people can always reach out to me through that contact form and learn a whole bunch about our program through our webpage.
Awesome, and I just wanted to ask that for the record, because I've actually, I don't know how, but I've had some students reach out to me about transportation questions. And I'm like, so I'm not the transportation person? So I don't know who gave my name out. I really appreciate this program, I think it's amazing. I live in the El Monica neighborhood, and those signs are everything. Next year, I'll have an El Monica kid, so I'm down to walk or lead any things that you guys are looking to do. And if you need any support as you're doing outreach, I know I work a lot with some of our communities of color, so if I can be an ally, I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
And she'll walk and roll with you as long as it's not before 7:00 AM. Council Teeter?
Yeah, I've just got one comment first, thank you. Really excited about this program, glad that we have it here. I've gotten really well-connected with a lot of the biking community here in Beaverton and Washington County, and a lot of them have been talking about how, asking questions, how can they support more bike buses or biking programs at school? So I'm happy to provide a connection to a lot of these people or talk with you all more outside of a council meeting about planning some bike bus programs or seeing how we can do some more of these on a more ongoing basis. So I'll reach out, or if you want to reach out to me, either one of those would work.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you so much for joining us. Order good weather for tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
All right, our next presentation of the evening is Agenda Bill 23205, Beaverton's Year-Round Shelter Update with Ms. Cohen. You're not rolling deep with people tonight, or just you? Okay. All right, I think we need to try to set a PR and be out of here by 8:00, council, so let's just keep that in mind. Thanks. Well, you can go have some alone time without all of us. Do you need help, Edward? Moms know how to open everything, so just, you know. All right, friend, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Megan Cohen, I'm the Program Administrator for Community Services, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our shelter team, working on the year-round shelter with a brief update about where we are and next steps. Interspersed throughout the presentation, I'll have some mock-ups that have been provided by our architecture team, InkBilt. And so you'll see those throughout the presentation. Just a quick reminder as we go through this, that the year-round shelter will serve 60 individuals experiencing homelessness. It is a partnership with Washington County Supportive Housing Services, which will be contracting a nonprofit service provider to be on-site. It will provide beds, three meals a day, supportive services, showers, and also a coordinated care space that will provide some clinic services. And so as we go through this, you'll get to see a picture of all of the different pieces that are coming together to make this possible. And thank you, Mayor, for a little bit of a preview of what's to come. So progress to date, right now, we, this evening, you all passed a number of funding and operations agreements that really piece together how this shelter is going to come to be. So those agreements help lay the foundation for operations in partnership with Washington County as well as complete the funding package that is needed in order to move forward with construction. I'll go into a few more details about the funding in just a minute, but also just wanted to give a highlight of the last couple of steps. We were last here with an update on the design plan, which you all had a chance to see. We have been in the process of working through that with our general contractor to talk about costs, make sure that that design fits into the cost structure that we have. And we've also begun the process. And we've also begun the process of selecting a nonprofit service operator for the shelter as well. Washington County posted a request for proposals. And we were able to hope, host an open house for those potential providers to see this space and to better understand what our hopes and wishes and dreams for this space were. And we are currently in the process of selecting, hoping to be able to have some news for you all come November. We are also in the process of working through all sort of the final permitting that is needed for the shelter to move into construction with estimated start date of middle of November. So we are really close to being able to, as the mayor said, break some walls and start the process of getting this shelter ready to house some folks. Now, their photo for you all. Okay, so this evening, you saw a number of agreements. We have, what you're seeing in front of you right now is just funds that have been identified for and secured for the construction piece of the shelter. We also had acquisition funds. And as the mayor mentioned earlier tonight, we have not had to use any general funds on the acquisition or renovation of the shelter nor on the operations. All of these funds have been secured from different sources, state, federal, Washington County SHS, to be able to give us this full picture needed to move forward. And so this evening, we saw agreement for Washington County Supportive Housing Services Capital Fund, funding, and also for gap funding of up to $3 million if, if we need for those construction costs. Both of those came through this evening. This is our dining space. Next steps on the year-round shelter. As I mentioned earlier, we are in the process of finalizing the operator selection and then also in entering into construction. Once we have the operator secured, we'll be able to start having conversations about the Good Neighbor Agreement process with stakeholders that include the neighbors that are adjacent to the property as well as jurisdictional partners that are going to be involved and the operator themselves. We anticipate that process to run from January to March as we work through that agreement and talk with all of the folks that need to be included. And then we have the exciting process of figuring out how to name the shelter and also to give the operator time to train and recruit the staff that will be needed. We currently have an anticipated open date. In end of summer, we're looking at August 2024. We are on schedule for that anticipated open date. And we'll see what happens with construction starting in November, but are feeling really positive about being able to stay on schedule as we move into that next phase. I wanted to end by just also providing a reminder about how folks can stay up to date on the shelter as we progress through these stages. We have a website listed on the bottom here, the beavertonoregan.gov/shelter, where we keep running updates about where we are in the process. And then there's also a link to a city notification list there called Shelter Updates Notification List. And when they're signed up on that, they'll get notified about city council meetings relevant to the year-round shelter, to some of our other homelessness work as well, and to any public events that would be related to that as well. We're hoping to have a public event to introduce the operator when they are onboard later this winter as well. So more will be coming as we get them onboard. And we are just really grateful for all of the support that we have gotten from partners in moving forward on the shelter work and being able to provide a space that is going to have supportive services needed to help people get into that next stage and into housing, which is ultimately our final goal. Thank you.
This is meant to be like a presentation, so we'll make sure we keep our questions brief. Anyone have anything for Megan? No? I mean, I think this is a topic we're pretty well-versed in. We look forward to seeing you in November. Thank you, Megan. All right. Our last but mighty presentation this evening is Agenda Bill 23204, Beaverton Committee on Aging Presentation. We have Beth Gilbert and Martha McJacobs to join us this evening.
Hi, thanks. My name is Beth Gilbert. I'm a librarian in community engagement. And I'm also the staff liaison for the Beaverton Committee on Aging. Tonight's presentation is going to be delivered by the BCOA Chair, Martha McJacobs.
Thank you, Beth. Well, I'm honored to be here and so grateful for all the work you do. It's really so appreciated. And thank you for setting limits with appropriate behavior as we all do with parenting in our lives. Well, I want to, I want to paint a picture for you first about what is aging? Because, you know, sometimes we don't realize we're aging. But aging goes from birth to death. And we age from the age of when we start walking, change. When we go to school, change. When we graduate from elementary school, middle school, high school, change. So we go through gains and losses all the time. But sometimes we're not mindful of it. Then we go to, after high school, we may go to college. We may go to trade school. We may go to work. We may travel. We have lots of options. Another change. And then we become 21. And all of a sudden, we feel like we've made it right. And then around 30, 40, we start to realize, wow, I'm not 20 anymore. I'm not 12 anymore. And that's when we, all of a sudden, it hits us, we are aging. And what we like to do with the Beaverton Committee on Aging is that aging is a process. You know, fear of death is human, but fear of aging is cultural. And we live in a very ageist culture. We don't honor our elders. We don't want to get older. We fight getting older, forever young, forever 21, stop the aging process. Well, we can't. So what do we do at the Beaverton Committee on Aging? And I have a flyer for you and everything. We have monthly meetings. We have events and programs. We work really closely with the Beaver, Elsie Stur, Viva Village, the Dave's Program with Washington County. And we do a lot of things with other partnerships. And we offer programs and our two programs, which I really love, which I'll talk about. But I want, I want you to look at the aging things. Just from 1960 to 2060, look how the graph has changed. And they say by the time in 20 years after that, it's going to be cylindrical. We're going to have as many young people as we do elders, adults. So there are many reasons for this, and they're all listed in the handout. And I, I really want to spend more time on the two. And then we even have a thing on Washington County. And look how it's changed over the years from 2000 to 2020. And that will change again in another 10. So how we age is up to us. What we do, how we eat, how we engage in the, in the community at large. Loneliness and isolation are big issues. But you know, loneliness is prevalent throughout our years. It's not just because we're older. So one of the things we like to do is make people aware, be aware that you're lonely when you're younger because then you can, you have a choice on how you're going to work with that. And do we have alone times? Yes. It's not, it's never being alone and never being lonely. But it's how we, how we relate with it, how we work with change all the time. And when we get older, our bodies change. That's reality. I'm going to turn 75 in Sep, in February. And I definitely notice changes. And you know, you just learn how to roll with punches. And I've decided age is only a number. And how I, how I work with that is, is really a gift that we have with each other. So I want to talk about these two committees that we, the cafes that we run, Death Cafe. Death Cafe has been around for a very long time. And it's a European concept, which we have now ignited here in the United States. And we got together to talk about death because we don't talk about death in this culture. We ward it off. It's like, it's never going to happen. It happens to everybody but me. And so people come not totally sure what they're going to get, but they, we actually end up talking about life. How do you make the best of our finite lives? And it's really wonderful. And we've had 28 Death Cafe sessions, 505 total participation, four facilitator trainings. And we've even created a booklet of all the topics. Well, this is for Age Cafe. But we've created this so we can pass this on. We can educate other groups to have their own cafes. So then we have Age Cafe. Age Cafe began in, in Beaverton in 2020. We went from in-person to on Zoom, and now we're back in-person. And this is a time to get together to talk about inspiring topics that relate with aging. So gratitude, creativity, living with intention, physical exercise, or taking care of ourselves. And it's, it's just a wonderful time that people get together to talk about what, what is their experience of aging. And we meet the first Friday of every month at the library. And we are going to take a hiatus starting in January. We're taking a break because it's been ongoing for a long time. But we've had 59 Age Cafe sessions, 1,219 participants, one facilitator training. And this is our, our starter kit that we can pass on. And then we have other events that we work with. Aging Attitudes with the Washington County Dave's Program and Fraud Prevention, which we work closely with AARP because fraud is huge with our older adults. They just get sucked in because they don't know how to say no. So now we can all train ourselves. How do we say no to things without feeling guilty, not feeling, oh, my God, I should pay more attention to this? Trust yourself. Trust when you know you're getting scammed because they're out there. And then we also have the Legacy Projects. Right now, we've had two sessions, 140 participants. We were expecting maybe 25 or 30. So the Legacy Project is what we're working with, with paperwork, legal work, financial, and what, what do we do when we die? So all those issues are being addressed. And we're meeting two more Wednesdays tomorrow and then the 10th from 3:00 to 4:30 at the library. So education and awareness. Again, we work with our, our Elsie Stur, the Hearthstone, oh, your tech queue. That started by a bunch of seniors in high school at Jesuit High. And they go out and they help older adults learn how to use their computers, their phones, and their iPads. It's so cool. Because a lot of, a lot of older people just don't want to use it because they don't know what to do with it. So they make it very simple. We have, in, in the little packet I have for you, we have a book list. So no excuse to not read up on aging. And it's fiction and nonfiction as well. And the research is really compelling. You know, one of the biggest things that I've come across in this is that we thought the brain stopped developing at the age of 25. And now the, the brain keeps changing. It's neuroplasticity at its best. So whatever you can do to keep your brain alive and well, to keep it going, because that, this little brain of ours has neurons, passageways, that are constantly, constantly recreating themselves and dying too. So what we don't use, we lose. And what we create, we create different ones. So, future goals. We are looking to create, increase the diversity of our board members. And we're wanting to do more multi-generational activities because aging is inclusive. It's not tribal. It's not divisive. We all age. And we want to offer a balance of informational and fun events for the city and connect with the city's other board and commissions. And how will we work with the city council? And the city council works with us. So we're, those, that's a big one that we're really trying to figure out. Because we want to work together as a community to make this a city that works for everybody. And our older adults are really important. So thank you. Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I find it particularly challenging to process new information or bad information, like we're all aging when you're smiling about it. So I, I just, I feel like I have a little bit of contrast going on. I appreciate the demeanor and humility you bring to the work. I know you and I have talked before that I think one of the misses our city council's not been able to focus on is aging in place gracefully. And as I'm helping my mother in her final stages and really thinking about, you know, what kind of culture are we creating around her so she feels safe and welcome and most importantly, has dignity? Those are things that I worried about even when I was the youngest city councilor ever elected. And I think as we start thinking about what our goals look like, what our council looks like, what are we doing to be more inclusive of our, the elders in our community? I think it's a really important thing for us. And you gave us a lot to think about tonight. Nobody likes to process the fact that they're always aging, but I appreciate that.
Hopefully, it'll be a breath of fresh air because you won't wake up one day when you're, I don't know, 55, 60 and go, oh, my God, I'm aging. And it's been a part of your life. So you integrate it.
I think that happens when you start getting gray hair and crow's. Hopefully, it's earlier. Oh, it's Councilor Tivnan.
Hi, Martha.
Hi.
It's so good to see you both.
Good to see you too.
I got to serve on the Committee for Aging my first year as councilor. So I was very wet behind the ears. And it was also in an extremely trying time for seniors in our community in 2021. There was a lot of hard work that you did that year to bring attention to everything from prioritization of who gets the vaccination to social isolation and how do we make sure our seniors are okay? It was, it was such an honor to serve alongside you.
Thank you so much.
And I think one of the areas that I would really like to see, even like AARP Oregon, who does great work. I got to work with them back when I was, before I joined the council, really beating the drum around housing. And you've mentioned aging in, in place gracefully, but also having single-level homes.
Yes.
And we don't have enough. We don't have enough for, for just the general population. But we really need to start prioritizing, making sure that we have housing here in Beaverton across the spectrum of life. There was a resident who had taken some survey here, filled something out, I think, for the Downtown Equity Strategy, who Spanish is her first language. And it was something along the lines of, dear Beaverton, you helped me raise two beautiful boys who I'm very proud of. Don't abandon me now that I can't afford you. And it was extremely poignant. So that is something that I just needs to keep continuing to get elevated. So I do, I have a question for you.
Yes.
It was along the lines of the question of what could the, the committee work on? I just recently had someone very near and dared to me move into an assisted living facility. And I think that probably there's a fair percentage of people that enter into those who've just experienced trauma. A lot of it. And are probably coming to terms with things and might, to that point you made earlier, not be comfortable talking about death. Maybe not even aging, but I'm, especially death. And I'm wondering if there's a way to bring the great work you've been doing with Death Cafe to our assisted living centers and making kits for them so that they can, maybe they're not ready to venture out, which my beloved, I am, friend is not ready for that. Very new to the city too, so doesn't know anybody.
Yeah.
And I think that's also maybe true. So. So I think that would be a great idea, and I would love to play a part in that. So anyway, that was my one thought.
That's a great idea because my husband Wade is now connected with Washington County to get Death Cafe's salt and peppered throughout Washington County. So we're, he's looking at all places to do that. And assisted living and, and alternative senior living communities is one of them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Hassan.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for your presentation. As I was reflecting, I think this group is the group I've probably had the least access to in the last couple of years. Which is ironic because I actually also, similar to Mayor Beatty, my aging parents live quite, quite close by and will not downgrade from their three-story home. And it drives me bananas, but that is not for today. I just, I appreciate the work you're doing. I hope that you feel like you are supported by us in whatever way that looks like. I did want to take just a moment to talk about the fraud. I think that's very common. I deal with my father wanting to click on things that he shouldn't. And so whatever we can do to support that. I don't know that I can direct this, but even if it's like social media awareness for our community, like there's so much stuff and span that our elders get, especially in technology. And so I just want to voice like how strongly that, that one really resonates for me. And I hope as, as you evolve all of this, just, you know, as you think of like what it means to diversify, like thinking about what does death for different cultures and different ways look like? My parents won't go into probably an assisted living facility, which means it's gonna be drawing straws with my sisters and I, which is also for another day. But there's just different cultural ways that, that folks do things. And I was really privileged to be a part of my grandparents' passing and just, just being a part of that and the way that, that they wanted that to happen. So thank you for this like uncomfortable and not really fabulous and sexy work that we should continue to think about. And I hope you feel like you can continue to, to bring awareness to it. The social isolation post-COVID, like I've seen what it's done to my dad from his, just like, it's really just, it's been rough. And so I hope you guys continue to create forums for that connection because I think you really missed out on that. And that's really impacted his speech and his ability to just communicate now. So it's, it's just, it's like years that we've lost. So thank you.
Yeah, you know what? We don't use, we lose. And when you're not talking to people, you lose how to do that. Know that the Dave's Program in Washington County can be very helpful for you in terms of figuring out options. Yeah, it's a tough one.
Councilor Duggar.
Thank you. I'll be really quick. Councilor Tivnan mentioned my question around what, what, what of these amazing programs can we bring? I have the privilege of living right in front of two retirement assisted living facilities, Beaverton Lodge and Creekside. So I've gotten, I've gotten to know a lot of my neighbors. I do know that loneliness is incredibly real. I also know, I, I was thinking, as I was preparing for this meeting a few days ago, how intertwined our safe routes to school and our senior communities are. Every single one of my neighbors I see walking around. And, and when I look at transportation issues, I also think, am I, am I participating in making it safer for my neighbors? Many of which are senior, right? Like that's incredibly important. So I'm, I'm really glad those two topics were brought, you know, not necessarily to school, but just to the market, to the doctors, to the dentists, to places that we all have to go. So I think those are incredibly important, and I thank you for all the work on that. But yeah, Councilor Tivnan asked my question, so around bringing the cafes and conversations onsite. Because I think that's an incredibly important resource, maybe even to the Stewart Center, I think, if that's not already happening. Yeah, like that would be incredible because I know a lot of those neighbors use that. But thank you, thank you, thank you. I also have family members going through Alzheimer's and various conditions. And social isolation is a symptom of those conditions too, right? Like you feel embarrassed, you feel all these things. So I think what you're saying is incredibly important. I want to be an ally in, in advocating and working alongside you. So thank you.
Well, and thank you because we all become allies when we work with the people in our lives who are, you know, death can come at any age. So it's not necessarily just working with older parents or older friends or relatives, but how we are there for people who are going through those challenging times when they are really losing. They're really at a loss. And yet there's just this incredible gift, the paradox of aging that you were bringing up, Mayor Lacy. It's really, I mean, we live in paradoxes all the time. So aging is just another piece of that. So I want to, where do I leave these for you?
You could leave it with the recorder and she will hand them out to us.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a great evening. All right, colleagues, we have a public hearing that I think will be relatively quickly. After that, we'll consider council news business. And very likely, I'll dismiss everyone and take public comments. That will not be awesome. Okay. So this is the time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending Beaverton Code, Chapter 2.06, relating to elections and declaring an emergency. I now call to order the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should follow the instruction included on tonight's agenda. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person comments, council members may ask questions of the speaker. When all public comments have concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed ordinance. Is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I will just keep this very brief because the agenda bill is intended to provide you with all the background that you need. The ordinance captures the city's current election processes. And I just want to highlight one issue for your consideration tonight in particular. And that is that there is an option, and this is in your council packet, to consider the possibility of when a person runs for, at the primary election and wins more than fifty percent of the vote, that when it goes to the general election, they would not be required to run. Currently, what happens is that that person is required to run. They just run unopposed on the ballot at the general election. So that's really the only issue for you that would be different from our current practice. And there is a motion captured in your packet if you would like to take that option. And I'll take any questions the council may have.
Any council have questions? I'll just say thank you for creating that fix. As someone that's been on the ballot three times, it's super confusing to explain to people while you're on the ballot again, on, with nobody else on it, and the cost. So I do think as we're deliberating tonight, I want to remind council, it does cost to appear in the voter's forum. It costs the city to run an election for that. So those are the things I'll be thinking about. If there's no questions from council.
Here, I have one.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, you're okay. I just put my name in the chat just now. My question refers to the wording in N code that says anybody running for an elective office. And that is intended to refer to mayor or city council. But I think it's interpreted these days to say like the specific seat that we say that we're running for. I, I feel like there's been some confusion, I know I've had it around the community, about why certain people run for certain seats? Or why do we have specific seats if, if we don't have a district or a topic associated with it? Now, this doesn't touch, or this process doesn't touch specifically on that. But I don't think that's N code anywhere, right?
No, this, this is all of the election code.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're talking about the positions, I think, that, that each, and that comes partially out of the charter and this idea that you have staggered terms. And so in order to keep it clear which, which seats have which terms, beginning and ending, they have position numbers. And so when a person does apply, they do apply for a particular position number.
Okay, so I'll just share just why I'm asking the question. So a lot of cities don't have the specific seat. They just say the top vote-getters will be elected into, if there are, the top three vote-getters will be elected into those seats that were open for that term. But they aren't specifically called out. So if I was running against somebody and they got the second-most votes out of everybody, they wouldn't be elected right now, despite the fact that they got the second-most votes total. So maybe it's not related to this current conversation, but it's something on my mind that might need to address in the future.
Do you think it would require a charter change?
Okay.
Not an ordinance change?
I would have to look at that, but it definitely wouldn't be this very simple, enact the current practice, which is the ordinance you have before you tonight.
Okay.
Could, could you?
It's a different.
Yeah, so we don't get off topic. Could you follow up with Councilor Teeter? And maybe ask, answer some of his questions later in the week?
Certainly.
I'll have him reach out.
Thanks.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay.
Sorry, really quick. Your mayor suggesting option two, I know that's not a question, but it's a question. When we're talking about what we want to consider. Your comment about.
I just want us to like, like, I want us to do this change.
Okay.
So that way we can remove cost from running for office. Because the majority of cost is in the primary. And I mean, if you go to the top two, that's it. But if you, like you won outright.
Yeah.
But then you had to pay again to be on the ballot.
Yeah.
Like I just want us, you know, there's a cost to, to not doing this emergency ordinance.
Yeah, no, so I wanted to clarify that option two is kind of what you're pushing or suggesting we do. And that's where we feel.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Yep. Do you want to? We could, um, I'm just trying to think about how we're gonna handle these public comments because most of them were here prior. Yep, and some of these were taken off earlier. So I think I need some direction from you. There's people with their hand raised, but I don't think they're here for the public hearing.
Okay, well, if, for people who are here for the public hearing, you need to take the testimony related to the elections code now. And then visitor comment you can take after the public hearing closes.
Okay, so I would ask you online to lower your hand if you want to speak in general comment and re-raise it because we will not accept your comment during this hearing. Yeah.
To clarify, for those who are listening right now that want to testify, city recorder is going to let them speak and they have to share what information before they can speak. Name and city of residence for the record.
Yep. If they start talking about not this, how do you want me to handle it?
Ask the person to hold their comment to the, to the visitor comment. Because again, this is a public hearing on one specific topic. It's only been open for that topic.
Right.
But general comment is available for all other purposes.
Okay. Okay, I will take public comment tonight on this particular issue regarding a public hearing of an ordinance amending Beaverton's Code regarding to the election and declaring emergency. With that, the first speaker is Mike. Please state your name and city and residence and know that you will be removed if it's not about this topic.
Mayor, are we doing two minutes or three?
Two minutes, please. All right, Mike. All right, we'll move to our next speaker, Tom.
Hey, Tom Salzito, and I wanted to speak on the election.
Thank you.
Election. Okay, um, so I just wanted to say all your names are on a list and the race war is coming soon, kikes. Fuck you.
Thank you. Ernest Warhol?
Yes, hello.
Are you?
I want to speak about the elections.
Okay.
Well, is this like rate choice voting?
It is not.
Okay, so you guys can't continue to steal elections?
Name and city on record, please.
Ernest P. Warhol.
Okay. All right, it appears he's done. Mary? Name and city of record, please.
The elections code.
Yeah, I know. Leonard Frank?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, I'd just like to speak to Mayor Lacy Beatty on this subject. You will never be a woman. You will.
Okay, Mike's already been removed tonight twice. Phil Barber? I, I mean, yeah. She's, she's already, she's already directed me on how we need to handle it. And so Zeke will be our last public testimony this evening.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Zeke Isle. I live at eleven oh, eleven zero eight nine Southwest Abell Drive in Portland. I would like to address the fact that you're a fucking tr-
Yeah. Okay. They're keep their, just reappearing the same names. Is it okay to close the hearing?
Yes, it sounds like everybody who's been listed has had an opportunity. We can close the public hearing and move on.
Okay. All right. All right, I now close tonight's public hearing. The council may either adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action. But if other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what other action, what other action is. Is there a motion maybe before we do that? Because I know we have choices in here. Do we want to just kind of? Are we okay with the one that removes the November? Are we, do we, are we good on that? Okay.
Okay, I would like to, I, I think Councilor Hassan clarified, but I also just want to make sure, city attorney, so if, if I make the motion under option two, that's adopting the appropriate changes, but it allows us to, primary winner does not have to go to November, good to go.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Then Mayor, I would move to adopt the ordinance embodied in the agenda bill, except that the proposed language for B C two dot zero six dot zero three zero D is replaced with the following. If at the primary election, one candidate for a city office receives a majority of the votes cast for that office, that candidate is elected to that office and is entitled to a certificate of election.
I'll second.
Ooh, Councilor Duggar got it. It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Duggar. Do we have any more discussion on tonight's motion?
I would like to just state my support for the motion because I do think it's important for us to have efficiency in the way that, you know, like if, if the voter's intention is very clear with a primary winner, it also just helps us be, have that fiduciary responsibility as a city to not have to hold another election when the winners are clear.
Thank you for that. City Recorder, I'll have you call the role.
Point of clarification.
Sure.
For the city attorney. So we're gonna replace the version as drafted?
Yes, I will provide you with the appropriate ordinance copy tomorrow with the correct language.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
And it passes seven-zero.
Uh, thank you. Okay, we have council new business. Any council new business this evening? Councilor Tivnan?
I know that it was not the right, even though for some listening or attending tonight, it seemed like a good opportunity to address some of the public comment made at the beginning of the meeting during a different agenda item where we were getting an update on the construction for the new shelter. I remember having this conversation about the situation happening next to St. Cecilia and getting some assurances that we would be kept informed of what was going on. And a lot of the stuff I heard today.
I think, you know, I'll talk with the city manager when she gets back tomorrow. I'll tell you, we've been engaged with them. There's some inaccuracies in what we heard tonight, and so, I'll make sure the council gets a rather robust update. You know, the police put out a statement yesterday, it was not, to our knowledge, a fentanyl overdose. So, there are some things about, that I understand they're scared and where they're at. But I do think we're working as expeditiously as possible. I mean, Captain Master Polito's been out at the school twice last week, and so, they are definitely getting our attention, and they're getting city resources to go and meet with them. So, I'll have the city manager do a memo for council. I think it's appropriate that you guys have all the update and updated communication as well about what's happening, and have the police chief chime in. That seems reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can add, I mean, I just, I do want to say, like, it was hard to hear some of what we heard tonight. And so, I like, I thank you for bringing that up, because I didn't know when the right place was going to be. And I appreciate us getting some sort of update. I do want to make sure we're working as hard as we can. Like, I don't, this shouldn't be an and/or. Like, I want us to be able to support our community and students, and then also figure out how we're supporting what's going on in the shelter. So, thanks.
I also just want to, you know, remind the community listening, tonight was definitely challenging. It's not the first time in city council that we've had disruptive hate speech before us. When it's happened in the past, it was generally in person, harder to hear, but easier to discern that it was an actual person doing it. I think online in this environment, it's challenging for us. I think what we witnessed when people go back and listen was a lot of animated, automated, likely one person controlling the narrative. I'm a huge proponent of our ability to have remote meetings. I think it gives people great access to us and people to come and testify. In the last three years, the majority of the testimony we've been receiving is real people that wouldn't be able to enter the halls of city hall and give testimony the same way. So, I don't want to discourage us from accepting remote testimony like this. I do think it's something we can work with the city attorney on to make sure that our language and how we handle these situations is in compliant with the law and where we're at, and making sure that free speech in a way is not as impactful for other people to hear when it's racist and sexist. And tonight's decision was mine to remove it. It wasn't the city council's. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear. As the head of this meeting, I made that active choice myself. So, if there's consequences, I'm the one that did it, and I would do it again. With that, all of the members that have their hands ready to speak have already been dismissed and had an opportunity this evening. So, city attorney, do I need to reopen and let the same people, we don't give people second bites at the apple at any other time?
These are the people who were not allowed to speak during the elections public hearing, correct?
Ah...
But were delayed to the public comment at the end of the meeting?
Some of them, but these are also people from, that are coming back on that were already given an opportunity at the start. There's no one new that I can see on this list.
But the people, not all of the people at the beginning of the meeting spoke at the beginning. That was part of why it was delayed to the end. What I'm saying is, anybody who, you should let anybody speak.
All right. I'm going to reopen public comment for this meeting. We're going to limit it to one minute. And, yep, if it's hate speech, we'll proceed in the same fashion. All right. With that, Mike Shiftwood, you have one minute. Why don't we just, like, dismiss all nonessential staff, and we'll take the public testimony this evening? And everyone else is welcome to leave. Yeah. Yeah.
Just, well, it's a suggestion, but I don't know if it's possible. Is it possible that when they get on the call, I believe they used to have to say their address, correct? And if they don't, can we immediately kick them off if they don't give their address?
We, the city council has never utilized that policy in the past that I'm aware of. So, I would not recommend that you take that action tonight.
So, we haven't used it in the past, but could we use it now?
You don't have a policy of doing that.
Okay, okay.
However, if there is cussing or something inappropriate in a public comment, we could potentially cut them off, as has already started.
No, unfortunately, we have to hear it.
Okay. One minute.
Yeah, I would recommend our executive team, like, this would be an excellent time to exit, or anyone else. And I think just regular essential people are welcome to, I mean, you're welcome to stay, but I'm excusing you for this evening.
You may also want to notify the viewership as well.
Yeah. I would also recommend any viewership take a, the end of our meeting is over, and so, I would welcome you to join us next week.
Can't we limit the number of people in public comment? I've seen other councils do that.
This will take less than five minutes.
Yeah. All right. We'll take one minute of testimony. Mike Shiftwood, we could turn the volume down halfway at least. Okay. All right, Mike's been given his opportunity and not taken it. Sadie Inward?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hello. Perfect. I would just like to ask, what has this city council against the First Amendment of our Constitution here in the United States of America? As a trans woman, I would like to very strongly support the First Amendment here. And I believe that even though we've had some vile, despicable comments, however, outside of that, we should be able to all, every single one of us, whether you're a man, a woman, a black man, a black woman, any other race, any other gender, you could be non-binary, you should be able to speak. Your First Amendment rights and exactly what you want. There should be no limits on free speech in America. That's one of the things we are founded on. That and that nigger, they're not allowed to vote in this nation, and they should be kicked.
All right. Mary, you have one minute to address the council.
Yes, hello.
Yep.
There we go. You ready? I got a song I want to sing, part of my First Amendment.
Make sure the time starts when they start. That'd be great.
Can I speak now?
Yep.
All right. There you go again, talking about reparations. There you go again, talking about something else free. And there you go again, talking about reparations. Well, listen to me, nigger.
All right, Reggie Wilson?
Hello, my name is Reggie.
All right, it appears that Reggie's not wanting to participate. George Lucas, wow.
to say, I wanted to talk about, what do we have? I'm looking at my speech. I wanted to say, you know, what is privilege? Is it privilege that we have our country and our cultural racial identity being erased and replaced, having our borders overrun by invaders on Ardine, having our children groomed by homosexual Jews, and our people being...
All right, Gabe Stutman?
Hi, council. Just wanted to remind you that the Brown Act is a thing, and every single violation opens you up to a civil lawsuit. I know you're just bureaucrats, and it's not going to affect you. It's coming out of the taxpayer dollars, but you should know that, should also know that the Holocaust is...
All right, John Zimmerman?
This is like, not going to...
I just want to speak to our community about some of the property holders in our community, and actually nationwide. Do the council know that block rule?
Yeah, if you guys leave, I get probably, yeah. Yeah. Well, we have lost quorum for tonight's evening, so I am going to call tonight's meeting to an end, and we will pick up next week.